Well, you said something about the two who met about something.
With Greg. We had to meet with Greg.
Regarding, anything regarding.
He's, I mean, he's gotta do.
And what is, you know, Jill, I love Gillian DePices. But she's, yeah, she's awesome. Awesome.
Yeah.
And the, uh.
They're all good.
There's not much. No, because of the patties, they're not bad. They're just rotten. You've gotta love them. And they're shaping them. Like, this is the age where you can confront your kids.
To the partnership. Because they're easy to sign.
I'm gonna make some money. I make a big amount like every day.
That's another question. I didn't start just gonna be on the first. Get, get, don't get it fixed.
Don't get it fixed. Don't get it fixed.
You've been going, Brad.
Well, that's a take.
There's some thorns. That's so funny. Yeah. People love to mow grass. Right, Ron?
He'll do it.
Well, let's see. If I could just find another great. Can we say that one more time? One more time.
Yeah.
Say that?
Me, maybe. Give him one day.
What, Jones?
Scared.
No doubt.
No doubt.
Mechanicsburg Borough Council Committee meeting and council meetings will come to order. I would like to start the meeting with an announcement that the meetings of Mechanicsburg Borough Council are being recorded and livestreamed for the purposes of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with the recordings of previously held meetings, can be accessed on the Borough's YouTube channel. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Ball call, please.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Agerton.
Here.
Councilman Gary.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Junior Councilperson Covert.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Nancy Ward.
Here.
Manager Robinson.
Here.
We have a board.
Thank you. And we have a presentation of Harb Awards. The members of the Harb. Ms. Beverly Bone and the council liaison, Agerton, will present the Harb Awards.
I'm Beverly Bone. I want to welcome the council members and the staff and the residents that are here today. I am a member of the Harb, Historic Architectural and Being Board, but I'm also a resident of Mechanicsburg, which I think is very important. I have a house that is over 100 years, and I can respect the work that you all have done to your buildings to preserve that aspect of your home. It's a labor of love, but I think in my mind, it gives you a lot of rewards as well. Tonight, we're going to give awards to five recipients from the Harb, and it's because those people have dedicated their work, hard work, to the preservation of their homes or buildings. Today, Rebecca Yurich, who is also a member of the Harb and a resident of Mechanicsburg, will be presenting those awards. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Beverly. Beverly's gonna stand here, and the recipients will ask that you come up and receive your certificate and then stand here so we can get a lovely picture. Since 2013, the Harb has recognized owners and businesses that have taken great pride, great efforts, great strides, and have been exceptional examples in preserving and promoting their properties as historic properties. Here, thanks to them, history lives. I'm the newest member of the Harb, and it is my honor to recognize these properties and the property owners, starting with 220 West Main Street. That is Tim and Nancy Wrinkler's home. This is next to the American Legion, so you've seen this for years, and what a beautiful property it is. Much of their work, she tells me, has been DIY. That is, anything that they could possibly reach or repair, they did it on their own. Nancy explains that she now knows all the do's, don'ts, and don't even try its about exterior painting. We appreciate their work. Beautiful job at 220 West Main Street. It's the home owned by Marjorie and Richard Snyder. It's at the corner of North Washington Street, so across from Lifeguard Financial Advisors. They have a nude charcoal-colored metal roof that, like everything else on their property, is appropriate and perfectly fitting. You'll recognize this home, maybe more because, as much as the house and the gardens, because of the old iron fence that looks brand spanking new, that surrounds the property and then jumps into the side porches and doors. Marge apologized to me that the fence was not made in Mechanicsburg. It's from Ohio. But that only underscores the length to which these two will go to provide a great-looking home. Congratulations. West Market, South Market Street is owned by Susanna Repert Brill and David Brill. 118 South Market Street is owned by Nancy Repert, and 120 South Market Street is owned and operated by Susanna Repert Brill, David Brill, and Nancy Repert. These three neighboring properties remain in the Repert family and have for many, many decades. They're also known to many as the Buildings That House, the Rosemary House, and Sweet Remembrances Tea Room. The maintenance of old homes, it never ends. These people know that. That's why we call them historic, because it takes a historic amount of time to take care of them. While their award isn't specific to any particular project, it's a collective thank you from the community and the Harb for all the work, the time, the caring it took to maintain these beautiful buildings and gardens. And if you don't know about the gardens and the backside of the properties, please take a loop around. Thank you for allowing us to take a peek at the places through your businesses and the many special events, and they had one today. With the honorees, the donkeys are here, and you have your certificates. I want to thank all of you, and we'll get a big round of applause, and then I'll turn the podium around.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Stop with the mowing grass.
Anyone, sir?
That was implied. It was implied.
Thank you, Harb members Bone and Eric, for the presentation of the awards, and for all the Harb recipients tonight who did such wonderful work on their property. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Hearing none. Are there any amendments or changes to the, to the proposed minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So.
Councilman Barrett moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agerton seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved, and now we have the period of time for citizens' comment. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Joseph Guganarle at 415 South Broad Street. Thank you for your time this evening. There's been some talk, and the information hasn't been out yet. It's gonna be in June. We've seen the paint marks about the concrete repairs. Some of it's substantial, some of it's not. I'm unfortunately one of the ones where it isn't more substantial, but we do have neighbors that have substantial, and it's gonna cost a lot of money. That being said, we're hoping that the board or something within Mechanicsburg is able to, since we are, we're still under assumption here, but we're looking at probably about a three-month repair time. I think they want it done by fall, and then they're gonna pave then in the spring because of the project they did down there for stormwater. We would like to see if there's any way that there could be any kind of funding to help some people, because there are some people that are gonna have a lot of, a lot of concrete replacement that aren't ready for that right now, and like I said, it was a very short notice for everybody that's there. I did talk to, my wife and I talked to Lane and Matt in the office Friday, just because I wanted some kind of heads up before I come in here, give some information to some neighbors. That being said, I don't know, I'm very familiar with township stuff. I've worked with townships in the past. I know Borough is a little bit different. But I don't know if there'd be any funding of maybe a stormwater grant or anything that would help anybody that would, and, and like I said, we talked to Lane, and he did have some ideas that he threw back at us, and it sounded pretty good. But that would be have to, that would have to be something that would be looked into, and if we could figure something out. That being said, real quick, the project is still going on, I'm assuming, to pave that in spring. The only question I have is, at, we're at 415, it's directly across from the high school. It used to be the big circle grate. There used to be a fountain lint ring that would pour down the street. They put two boxes in. The box on the road does not take water. The water just completely goes over. The box on the sidewalk takes some water. There's also a Baysaber sedimentation box that was installed at the intersection of Keller and George Street. Right after that, the downstream line, and people are probably familiar with this, Lane, I'm sure you are. When it rains, that, the storm sewer manhole access lid will pop off. So the Borough comes out, they put a, one of those barriers on it with a bunch of sandbags. If you're gonna pave the road, is there something wrong with what was already put down? Because if there was, you might end up making it back up.
So I believe the project is not yet completed. We have to custom fabricate a box that goes into Simpson Street, Main Street, Simpson Street area. And that has yet to be completed because it requires some additional permitting.
The only problem with this is this, this would be, you're, you're talking Simpson and George? Or are you familiar?
Yeah, all, so the entire section that was replaced on Keller and George still is not connected to the main.
Okay.
So that's why it keeps backing up, because we haven't been able to connect it. We're waiting on some final work on, on that custom box that the president referred to.
Okay.
Once that's done, we'll be able to finish the road and zip it up and connect it.
Okay.
So that should relieve the pothole problem. I have Greg and Ryan, the engineering, looking at the first item you brought up, which is actually on the, the Broad Street side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those boxes tie together. You can see that. It's just, I'm not sure how it's supposed to work, and maybe that's, I, I don't know if that was piped the whole way down.
Yeah.
I don't think it was, because they didn't dig up Broad Street. They just dug up Keller.
Right.
But that, that might not be the same issue. Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
But it just, it'll take, there's no leaves or nothing there, because I've played along with it. There was, there was nothing there. It just flows right over top.
Yeah. I've got the engineers looking at it.
All right. Thank you. We'll, we'll take a look.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Joseph Seig, 417 South Broad Street, right next to Joe. I know I only have three minutes, so I'll start out by saying I've lived at that address for 25-plus years. Broad Street has always been okay as far as paving goes. Keller has always been horrible. You guys have had this as a project, a known issue for 20-plus years. You've been working on it for 20-plus years. You've had the funding for 20-plus years, but yet you're giving the citizens three months to get everything fixed, and that just doesn't seem right. I know you have the state law on your side that says, we say you have to do it, you have to do it. I get that. I'm also in the same boat with Joe that I'm fortunate, not a lot of repairs. Some repair work is needed, so it's not bad. There's other people on that street that the damage that was done is because of the mismanagement of the stormwater by the school district and the Borough, and it looks like they're gonna have to pay to fix a problem that was caused by the stormwater issue. So that was my, you know, hey, this was a big gut punch to the residents that live there, and I had to deal with those crappy roads for, in my case, 25 years. But what I really want to talk about, and I've talked to, I think it was the Borough manager, and this would have been years ago, I called and asked, hey, do utilities have to bond their work if they do roadwork? And the answer I got was no. Is that still true?
No, almost all of our projects are fully bonded.
So why isn't that being enforced? Because Broad Street used to be okay until UGI came through. Now, when I drive up Broad Street, gee, please don't listen to this, I actually circumcised up there to not hit all those road marks. Everything is like a speed bump or a depression where that work was done. So if you're making them bonded, why aren't you following up with utilities to fix it? So are we just throwing good money that's gonna go bad because the utilities are gonna come through and mess up the roads anyways? So that's all I, thank you.
Hello. My name is Porty Benz, and I live at 410 South Broad Street. In relation to what they were saying, our, we probably have the biggest bulk of fixes that need done. We have about 44 feet of curb that is missing. It has been missing since we have lived there for over 16 years. I grew up right across the street, so I've lived there my entire life. I went to Broad Street Elementary. I went to Mechanicsburg High School. We used to ride rafts down the streets when it rained. The problem has never been fixed with that manhole right in front of the high school. And even though it looks pretty now, it's still not fixed. So I'm hoping that what you were saying about the connection, is that going to fix the problem?
Oh, we'll have to see once everything's connected.
Okay, because we're gonna have to spend all this money to replace this curb and the sidewalk, and if you come down on a rainy day, you can't even walk on the sidewalk or cross the road, because it is just a flood from that pipe that's right in front of high school. Not a pipe, but a manhole covering. So I just, I don't want to have to force ourselves to put all this money at a quickly, at a quick pace into replacing the curb and fixing the sidewalks if the real issue is not going to be fixed, because it's just gonna eat it away. So that I would like to know the answer to, if that is going to be fixed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Robbie Brubaker. This is Bob Brubaker, 33 West Main Street. As people know, just her, but I'm, I'm too, my computer wouldn't let me print anything, but I'm here to speak about a dog park. And there's a couple places that, the one, like, baseball field that closed down, that's a big spot, or like a small dog park, because it brings community, people together, like-minded people to come together with their smaller dogs, you know, everywhere together. And I already have, like, people who would donate so many things for this. So if there wasn't much money, like Lowe's, Home Depot, they would always help, because I called them a few times, and I was supposed to write a thing out for Lane, but I did it a couple times, and it, I wanted it to be perfect, but I only have three minutes, so continue. So, or even up at the Soldier Memorial Park and such, there's a lot of room up there for, like, a small dog park, like, maybe up where they are growing vegetables and fruits, stuff in that part. There's a lot of room and stuff. Like, there's no place for the dogs to run, what, around 3:00, and tell them to leash, throw, like, rules and stuff, and she would love to, like, run around and have a fun place, and, like I said, bring community together and stuff. That's what Mechanicsburg's trying to do, bring the community together in a like-minded way and bring happiness and stuff. And also, my friend Matt from Fantastics told me about a skate park possibly that we were talking about, and I, that's an awesome idea, because there's no place for the kids to skate, and this town used to be, like, hippie skaterish, like, more fun, like, like, there, but we had to, like, do illegal stuff to skate. If we have a skate park, there we go. We have legalist, like, rules. Of course, you have to have the rules and so what and so forth. So, yeah, my remiss is definitely up. So I hope we can talk about this and get things.
Patricia Heppenfinger. I am one of the owners of Hair Razors, one strawberry alley there. Now, you have the road closed between the Gingerbread Man and us for street walking, they say. Now, I was told, we weren't, we weren't notified they're even closing the road down. So now we have customers acting the circle around because it was, we weren't, we weren't told that we could tell our people. The issue is parking. What have you done to eliminate that problem? There's, there was parking all along the street. Now there will be no parking between the alley, because you're gonna have a walking street. And I don't understand why you would make that alley a walking street. The only thing that's gonna benefit is the new tobacco shop, which is open, and they have a big tent in the middle of there. So now we have customers coming in saying, what's the deal with the tent? And I was like, I don't have any clue. Somebody told us that they were renting the space in the alley. I don't know if that's true. Then we were told that it's gonna be closed till all summer. The guy over there says, well, it's gonna be closed all summer, hopefully forever, for good. And then I called the Borough Office, and they said it'll be closed till August, then they'll decide. Then the guy that lives on that street who can't even get people to deliver because it's all blocked, there's nowhere for him to park, he's parking in the parking lot. I told him, you can't do it. It's private property. So now he's flipping out because he has nowhere to park, and he says he can't even get stuff delivered to his house. So how are these places gonna get stuff delivered if they can't go down the street? If the Gingerbread Man ever opens, which who knows, they deliver in that alley, now we're gonna have delivery trucks coming into our parking lot. It's, it's, it's a mess. It's a mess. So I don't know. How long is it closed? What's the truth? Because they told the guy that's living there, he says, well, they told me it's gonna be closed for 30 days. I says, well, the guy there told me it's gonna be closed till summer, and then the Borough Office, he told me the other thing, and then, then he told me, I said, so about the parking, I says, you know, you eliminated all this street parking. They even cut the signs down in front of the tobacco shop for parking, which tells me it's, maybe it's closing for good. I don't know. We, we, no notice, nothing, but I don't know, I don't know what's going on, and we should be getting notice. We're right there. All the businesses there should know what's going on. Send them out something. We're closing the street right next to your shop. So now, you know, we got the issue with the people from the tobacco shop parking in our parking lot, so that I have to go out and confront these people and tell them, you gotta move. Half of them don't listen. There's signs posted. I tell them, can't you read? There's a sign here. There's a sign in front of your vehicle. They're, they're construction people. We're parking, you know, parking lot for that business. It's, it's out of control. Something's gotta be done. I don't know what a walking street, all that money you're gonna spend, is gonna do going down that alley. You know, it just doesn't make sense. There's businesses on the other side of town that could prosper from a walking street. This is gonna do nothing, but you'll be able to walk down the street to the parking lot.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Stone.
414 North Over Street. I know you're paying. I've been up there talking to these people on West Keller Street. There's no reason that road should be a battle zone. You can't go down there. This project's been going on for a year, and they had to put up with this street for a year. It's uncalled for. Travel the streets. There's, there's five other streets that are mainly traveled in this street, in this borough, that has potholes that the ballast is coming out of them. Literally. I mean, that's uncalled for, but you must spend $4.1 million on a building, but we can't take care of our roads? Isn't our citizens more important than a building, which, where's that in the comp plan at? It's not in the comp plan about our building. Now, to your thing. The tent was never approved at council meeting. It was just tables and chairs in that, in that location. Plus, I was down there the other night and had an open flame inside that tent. How is that fire safe? That is not fire. There's nobody in the tent, but there was an open flame in that tent, almost halfway up the side of the tent. Who gave the permission for this tent? Because it was not decided in this room. Someone online, someone made a decision behind a closed door to let this guy do this. Who runs this borough? The council or a new business in town? Thank you.
I really wasn't expecting to speak. My name is Patty Hirsch, and I'm from the other side of Mechanicsburg, but I feel they're paid, so I got three things. One, a very dear neighbor of mine, I live at 1102 Charles Street. I live between the two dip signs. If anybody knows Charles Street and Gale, I live between the two dips. I see my neighbors. I go out and I talk to them, and the one lady came through. She was walking on Apple Drive, and as she got close, I guess, Apple and Oxford. So as she went up there, the trees that are in the, in the medium on the outside toward the curb are lifting sidewalks. She never saw it. Fell. She had staples put in her head and a broken arm. Now, I know the Borough should know about this. I'm not sure who she called, whatever, but it's on record. I would like to know what's being done about that, and it can be put in minutes. It's fine. The dip on Charles Street months ago, and Lane, you might remember this, but I know Matt remembers. I don't see Matt here, though. I don't think he, I don't know if he comes up. But anyways, the dip has been there as a landmark. I lived there 30 years. When I moved here in that neighborhood, my children, 44, 43, and 39, that, they were the only children in the neighborhood. We got children all over the place moving in. So now we tried to take the dip sign out, and I caught it, because I went out and said, what are you not doing? Oh, we're taking the dip out. I said, heck, you are. I called the Borough. I said, you can't take that entire dip out. We'll have cars coming through there like they're on Simpson Ferry Road going 50 mile an hour. They're gonna kill a kid. I'm gonna be very deliberate about it. We're gonna have a tragedy. So now UGI came in, and we had a gas change of, from oil to gas. I did it. They dug up the dip. I'd like to see it done correctly. If you don't want the dip, take the dip out. Put a hump. Look over at Royal Drive and Lower Allen Township. They put three humps going down that Royal Drive, and you know what? Changed the dip sign to a speed hump. That's what they did. It gotta have, you gotta slow them down. And there, at James Street, on record, they're going through the stop sign. At Gale and Charles, they don't see stop. They see yield. So we have a problem there, and more so, we got a water problem, and you probably all have heard this too. The water, Charles Street. Charles Street comes sort of down toward my property, but then it goes up. The water doesn't travel up. It lands in 1104 and 1102. And we've had this now for a couple of years, ever since the water meters were put in. Our roads were supposed to go back to their original. They didn't. So I don't know who signed off on that. And speaking of those water meters, someone signed off to say that you just abandoned them in place. So I had a water meter abandoned in my house, a new one put out in my lawn. And every time I flushed my toilet, it went real loud. I had to have Zimmerman's Plumbing come in and dismantle that, pay for it. And I wasn't going to go through the bureaucracy and all of that about the bill. I paid for it. But who signed off on abandon a meter in place? My question. And other than that, it is, I think those are the three big things. But again, living there 30 years, seen it all, but this is, this is big. It's huge. So, and then the person, there's another resident that moved in right down by James Street. She said, I'm really concerned. They don't even stop the stop sign. So they're using Charles Street as Simpson Ferry Road. And they can get a high speed going. They don't have, they don't even have a dip anymore. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A little bit good. A lot of people have been complaining. My name is James Comrie. I live at 224 West Main Street, Mechanicsburg. I'm with the American Legion. Appreciate the Borough Manager this year with the High School Baseball. We made a lot of money for Reese Coast America. We have two more groups coming up now. One's American Legion Baseball, which is eight home games there, plus then Twilight. I don't mind paying a permit for Twilight because we're not in charge. But coming up to this American Legion, myself and the guy that helps me run it, or the liaison, we're the American Legion. So for the baseball team. So we already gave money to the borough to use the field. And there's a permit coming up that I have to, you know, come up with another $80. I don't think I should have to pay that. As in, we already gave you guys, you know, you know, for, for the field, just use the stand. So I'd like you guys to hash this out or figure this out. Plus also, too, I came up with the idea with this last year. I signed up two ballgames, high school ballgames last year, and watched that stand not being open. And I said to myself, well, we need money for reefs up at cemeteries. We do three cemeteries, close to 1,000, 1,000 reefs. So I came to the borough, they sent me here, sent this here. I got, and I had a key last year for the stand. This year, I don't have a key. I, it's like I gotta, like, beg or somebody to come open up the stand. I'm not going to be opening it up just on any whim. It's only going to be for the games, and that's it. Or to resupply, which does happen a lot, because there's not that much room to keep stuff cold in there, nor enough storage room to make it thing. I just feel that I should be allowed to have a key, and we shouldn't have to pay for the permit for that now, for the Legion Baseball. Now, with Twilight coming up, I have no problem paying for that. Okay? Because it's a whole different entity. But I'd like to be, not have to pay for that one, plus get a key for the stand and be able to use it without bothering him, his staff, to open up the stand when there's already shorthanded and it could be used a heck lot better than me calling them and asking for the stand. Okay? Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Anyone for citizen comment? Is it a quick question?
Oh, we're back. Here's where you find the minutes for the city.
We're on, they have to be approved at the next meeting. And then they will be on the website.
And how do we get feedback?
The Borough Manager, Borough Staff will be in touch with you. Moving on to Mayor's Report.
Thank you.
April 20, closing of South Barker Street was very helpful for Earth Day. Vendors and lots of people. April 26, 27, and 28, friends in the Simpson Library held a successful book sale. Shelves are empty, yes, people do enjoy reading. April 28, Phyllis Weber, matriarch of the Weber family, enjoyed a police escort to Echols Drugstore for an open house gathering to celebrate her 100th birthday. Gary and Steve Weber are her sons. May 1, attended a South Central Pennsylvania Safety Driving Competition at Somerdale. Camp Hill High School team won first place. The Kingsburg dropped their driver education program. Second, officiated no-fee wedding at the Mayor's Office. Four, art and wine walk brought me people to downtown Mechanicsburg. Thirteenth, crime watch took a COVID sabbatical, thanks to Lieutenant Brian Curtis and Scott Pelman. It's up and running. First guest speaker was State Rep Cheryl Delosier. Seventeenth, the Kingsburg Chamber of Commerce held a ribbon cutting for kimchi girl at 6 West Allen Street. The Mayor's Office welcomed her with a key to the city. Nineteenth, Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Andrew Cooney held at Trees and Trails Environmental Center, presented a citation and a key to the city from the Mayor's Office. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilman Burek moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Anthony seconds. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the regular agenda is discussion and action to advertise the repeal of the Recreation Board ordinance.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Burek moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Martin seconded. Any discussion?
This will just be an advertisement, and then it'll be advertised twice, and then we'll have it on the agenda at a future meeting for discussion and approval at that time.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Martin will report, I'm sure, later on, on the first meeting of the Recreation and Events Subcommittee. So that's, that's an exciting, exciting opportunity for Recreation and Events in Mechanicsburg. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item, discussion and action to advertise the ordinance for acquisition of 219 East Main Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Vice President Anthony moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman O'Neil seconds. Any discussion?
It's the same, this is an advertisement. And then it'll be advertised twice, and then we'll have a discussion and, and at a future meeting.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item, discussion and action to authorize the Police Department to proceed with candidate selection process for one officer trainee.
Is there a motion?
I so moved.
Councilman Burek moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Vice President Anthony seconds. I only request that the motion include that the, that the rate for the memorandum of understanding is at 80% of base salary for the training. Any discussion?
So further discussion, of course, is that we would, Council would have an opportunity to review the agreement prior to ratifying it.
Yes.
So we're authorizing to move forward, but we'll have another opportunity to look at that agreement and make adjustments to it if we felt that was necessary.
Yes.
I think Bob needs to agree to your.
Do you agree to the prior with the 80%?
I do, yes. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any questions? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Committee meetings. Borough Managers' Report.
Thank you, sir. My report's available in your packets and online for the public. The only thing I would add is PP&amp;L is actually finishing the installation of new lights over at Strawberry Alley Parking Lot yesterday through tomorrow. So if you see the action happening there, that's the new lights going in over there. And so, thanks to PP&amp;L for kind of finally getting to that.
Thank you. Any questions for the Borough Manager? There are none. Moving on to Finance Administration Ordinance. Mr. Anthony.
Yeah, so we, I lost my page. So we were talking about the investment strategy in the past. You all approved the, and gave us the authority to move forward with investing in CDs, so that we would have a, kind of a latter effect, always kind of have access to a percentage of the money. Those quotes have come in. We're reviewing them now. And we'll be pushing it out to Finance Committee for a quick look for agreement on which ones we're going to go with, of the ones that were put to us. And we should have that done in the next week or so, I hope. So we're in great shape. The good news is rates have gone up a little bit since we began this process. So we're in good shape.
Very good. Anything else?
No, not this time. Thank you.
Public Works and Safety, Burek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sanitary Sewer Department reports, we have. We don't have representative of any questions, concerns. Nothing. Public Works, Safety, of course, jumping down to Police Chief, since we got you here.
I just have my reports there. I just have one thing to add. So we had an intern start Monday from Quittstown, I believe, from school in Quittstown for law enforcement, for a resident.
What are they going to be doing, Chief?
They're going to be learning as much as they can, so they can, you know, ride along with our guys, ride along with the CSOs, probably be park security, because that's looking like it's going to be a little bare from the shirt itself. Probably have her work park security, try to some of that stuff from happening.
Are they going to the academies at their ultimate goal?
Well, I don't know what year, but yes, that would be the ultimate goal. I don't know what year she's in at school. Still not.
And I'm sorry, I'm just being ridiculous. High school, college?
I just don't know. See, we've been working on her for about six months. That's how, as soon as she got done with school, she wanted to start. So, all right, she's good. Good to go.
Questions for the chief?
How many hours does she have to work?
You know, she's asked to put in hours, but I don't know if she has a minimum or maximum. But she's going to work as many as she can. She'll probably be here every day. She's excited. Nice to see that.
Yeah. It's nice to provide that real-life experience. I did an internship my senior year. I was a criminology major, and decided law enforcement was not the way that I needed to go after I got my degree.
Sometimes that, that's what they decide. It's a good place for them to learn.
Good place to figure out before you're done with school.
We have a position, though, if you're interested.
They wouldn't want me on the force.
Is that a paid position, Chief?
Uh, when, if, if she becomes a park security officer, yes. But otherwise, not when she's coming in, riding around, and with the guys, there's no pay there, that's all.
Is that a requirement of her education?
She, I asked her what her, what she was supposed to be doing with this internship, and she said, learning as much as I can in a short period of time. So I don't think, I think we can make it up as we get along as far as what she's learning. She's already learning things. So I think it'd be a good, it's a good experience for somebody to see it from actually riding along with somebody and watching what they do. Small town, but then she, you know, she can put that together with what might be available in a big city or, or maybe a place that's not for her either. So it's a good way to decide.
And it's a great relationship with the universities, too. So she has a good internship. You might be able to get some more summer workers out of that program, too.
Yes. They like the idea of being some-paid.
Anything else, Chief? Anything else for the chief?
I have just a question that pops into my head. She's doing ride-alongs. Is she covered under our insurance or the school's insurance, or how is that liability covered?
That would be the school.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Only one's going twice. MC Ward, I'll check that.
Sure. You have a copy of my report. I have nothing to highlight there, so I'll go ahead and skip down to the update on Jubilee Day preparations. We've scheduled the final Jubilee Day preparation meeting for May 29. So we'll have nearly all of the participants from both Borough Staff, from Cumberland County Department of Public Safety, from the Fire Police Task Force, Penn State Health Lifeline, the Chamber of Commerce will be here to discuss any final preparations. A number of the items that we had is kind of takeaways from 2023, including some areas where I needed to have more documentation, areas around having the fire police involved earlier, areas around protecting our environment post-Jubilee Day. Luke has been all over that. We've been working with Jeff Palm to make sure that there's some more information in the vendor packets regarding both Code Red and the ability to sign up for that for vendors, and just letting them know that we're monitoring the weather and potential safety, probably health, not health, safety and weather issues. And then also, Luke is working on some information to provide to them just about making sure that as they are ending their day, that they're not just dumping their coolers and anything that might have been left over in their coolers from the day down the drain or down the street, so we have a swale running down the middle of Main Street at the end of Jubilee Day. So things are coming together really well. I think that out of all the things that I had, kind of as takeaways to improve upon this year, I think we're taking care of most of them. So it's really good to have the institutional knowledge that both chiefs bring to Jubilee Day, and then also great to add in people like Lane and Luke to provide outside perspective and help make each year better.
Thank you. Anything for MC Ward? I do have a note here that says that you've agreed to stay on until Jubilee Day of 2025.
That's incorrect. Oh, nice try.
And then just a note, which is that Council received a Mechanicsburg Volunteer Fire Department report, which you have, and we also received a Borough Fire Chief report, thanks to both the department and Borough Fire Chief, as well as to the Borough Manager. Thank you very much for those two reports. It's great to have. That concludes the committee report.
Thank you. Mr. Booker's not here, so I will run down through. I do not believe there's a library liaison report. School Board, Mr. Anthony?
Yeah, sure. A couple of items. First was, the Rec Department received an award this year from the Pennsylvania Rec and Parks Society as being the number-one rec department in the state for the work they're doing. So pretty high honor there. They talked about for a little bit that their immediate unit has programs for helping children in need. The governor's proposing an increase in the age threshold for property rebate tax program that has been in place. And so for folks who are in a situation where they don't, they're in poverty levels, there's an opportunity for a rebate of part of their property taxes. That's through the state. There's also a rebate program through Mechanicsburg area school districts. So you can check with, that is funded through, I believe they said, the lottery system. And you can check with the school district or the state site for more information. And I have a lot more here on that. If you're, if anybody's interested, I have a lot more here on that. I can talk to them about it afterwards. The board approved the lowering of the minimum age for their The board approved the lowering of the minimum age for their rebate program to 70. And the, there has been a school safety institute that has been created at a statewide level. Dr. Lighty is serving on that board and they talked about how that is going to be a good thing for all the school districts throughout the state. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Junior Councilperson?
May 31st Mechanicsburg graduation of the 24 seniors. He starts the night testing went on last week from Tuesday to Friday. It tested on biology and English. The Mechanicsburg marching band started their introductory rehearsals Tuesday of last week and the marching band participants from last year will be marching in the Memorial Day Parade this Monday. The school is coming to close June 6th and another Eagle Scout thing. Senior Henry Grill finished his Memorial Park Eagle Scout project and Mr. Lair was there for helping him with that. And Mechanicsburg varsity softball is in second place in the Midtown Keystone Conference.
Thank you, awesome. Any questions for Junior Councilperson?
I actually do have a library update. I just remembered Sue Erdman let me know that the library is now a family search affiliate library and the Cumberland County system is a family search affiliate library. So that's actually a really big deal. If you're into family history research, it becomes, it's a repository for millions and millions of records that you can now access at the library. So it's a pretty big deal for the library system and for, for people who are interested in history and genealogy.
Moving on to Community and Economic Development, Councilwoman Agarjun.
All right, Councilman Anthony Bradlon Review Report. Board Report.
Sure, yeah, I spoke with the county who subsequently sent me out a report on all of the loans that we have outstanding and the available money that is currently available and the payment history on the loans. So we, for the folks that are in the audience, we have a total of about $266,317 in our quote unquote assets. 124 of that is available, 124.5. And we have four loans outstanding right now for a total of $141,771. All of them are paying well on them. And we are in conversations to see about bringing that program under the Borough route. And again, if there are any businesses out there who are in need, they should approach us to have a conversation about the loan program. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Anthony?
Yep.
About Planning Commission Report, anything?
I have nothing.
All right, and HARP, you know, we saw we did our awards tonight and we'll continue. We are working on making some changes. We're a little bit behind schedule, but we're going to continue charging lines and make sure that we tighten up the HARP process. Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership Liaison Report. I just want to highlight that for the first time in a long time, I see a community calendar going out and think, I'm thankful for the workers down there, the volunteers, because it's getting all of the activities in Mechanicsburg into one place. So if you're looking for activities, they're really highlighting that and really working well with businesses. These earrings from, do you like this?
I do.
Yeah, yeah. So like they're really highlighting the businesses downtown and I'm excited. There's an energy. We're still looking for members. So if anyone in the community wants to join the downtown partnership, we are definitely looking for new members. I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we got those at Mojito Beach?
No, but I did get a sweater there.
Did you?
I've spent a lot of money downtown this week.
Likewise, the Thompson household, I'm responsible.
A lot of activity under about base. We had a site visit on May 16th at Railroad Plats. This is for windows that will look out to the Strawberry Alley side of the building. First floor commercial, upper floor would be offices related to first floor occupant commercial and perhaps an office for the ownership interest there. We had a number of businesses that have opened within the last month. Mojito Beach was one of them. Seymour's Apothecary and Plant Boutique opened at 2:30 East Main Street. We had a home healthcare business that opened on South Market Street and the Bewitching Moon has opened on South Market Street. So a lot of activity there, including the cleanup of the former dentist's office that the Ruppert and Ruppert Brills owned, which is two, which is 110 South Market Street. The building at 34 West Main Street, that includes Mumaw's Jewelers is being sold. Jim Heffelbauer, who is the owner of the property and the owner of the jewelry business, indicates that that settlement will take place by the end of the month. Dad's Garage Burger and Grill House, the owner of that business, which is not the owner of the property, is expanding with a new eatery in what was the Bewitching Moon space. So this is the unit right on the corner. And he tells me that it is going to be a Mediterranean slash Greek restaurant with kebabs and shawarma and gyros, that sort of thing. Not as elegant as Hellenic cuisine, more grab and go, more casual dining atmosphere there. I know that there have been some talks with the Borough about some challenges there, we'll say, but they're looking to move ahead with that project. Want to thank the Borough, the HARP members, our HARP liaison for their support for the HARP and the historic district and all things related to that. It's nice to see genuine appreciation and concern with that being a wonderful process, not a problem, but a process. And we so appreciate that the work that's done through the HARP, approved by the HARP in those properties and businesses just makes Mechanicsburg much more attractive. I say an attractive, Mechanicsburg is more attractive to investment and residents and tourists and shoppers, diners and so forth. And my last addition to your report was that the property at 125 West Main Street that houses Spice Restaurant and Bar is back on the market for sale. You'll recall that when Spice was moving in, that I noted that that was an installment sales agreement, not an outright sale. The, one of the listings that I saw for the property characterized it as 16 units, family friendly, on and on. Exactly. There are no apartments in this building. This property has a hotel liquor license and with that, you are required to have X number of guest rooms. There are no apartments in that building, just so that, that you know. But there is a liquor license, liquor license, as long as you maintain so many guest rooms. That's what I have. Anything for me?
Thank you. Thank you so much. It has been like all the ribbon cuttings in the last couple of weeks.
Business is brisk.
Yeah.
My son says she's retired, but it clearly hasn't taken effect.
Well, thank you very much. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Property Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Martin.
So we, you know, the Rec Board there is number one and we're advertising, as we voted to have that go away and be replaced by the Recreation and Events Subcommittee, which I will lead. This will be a Subcommittee of the Property Parks and Rec Council Committee. So it will basically be a troupe of volunteers from the community and anyone is welcome who would like to help plan events within the Borough. We had our very first meeting last week, I believe, or two weeks ago, last week. And we have a very small group so far, but very eager group. We hope to have what I am loosely referring to, Road Avenue Family Fun Night, July 12th. It is in the very early stages of planning. We hope to have some live music, food truck, maybe a beer truck, things like that to get people downtown. Beyond that, we want to plan other events within the parks, within the Borough. We plan to keep track of the parks, what, what maintenance needs to be done in them, how they can be improved, all those fun things. So we're always looking for volunteers, much like the partnership. So if anybody would like to volunteer to help plan and run events within the Borough, please let me know. Beyond that, I have the Shade Tree and the EAC reports and they are Ms. Agarjun.
So unfortunately, they took a break this month, but we will continue planting trees and making sure green space expand. But they've worked so hard that they deserve this month off. That's the end of mine.
And then items for discussion, we have the appointment of the Recreation and Events Subcommittee members.
Yes, and that is my job and I have the list of the names, which are Sunny Pedalek, Matthew Martin, Ellen Golinsky, Diane Nace. And the committee will be supported by Michaela Bear, who is the Community Engagement Officer.
It's a great group.
It is a great group. It's, it's a group that was very excited, I believe, to take part in this, this newly formed committee and the discussion was quite, I think, vibrant and, you know, there were a lot of ideas thrown out about what events and different ideas about what the committee can tackle. But we are looking for more volunteers and, and more opportunities, so.
We do have two people that Ms. Nace and Ms. Golinsky, who came over from the Rec Board, and they're, they're very excited to, to be part of this new committee. And one of them even said as they were leaving, "Oh, I feel like I've accomplished something." So, so that was good to hear.
Yes, very good to hear. Any other discussion or questions?
Nope, that's all I have.
Nope. Here are none. Oh, well, actually, do you want to give a quick update on that? We had a very good Cozer Park meeting with Upper Allen Township.
Yes, so we did meet with Upper Allen Township as we have that joint agreement with Cozer Park. We talked about renovating the bathrooms in that space. We talked about possible skate park at Cozer Park. Oh, we talked about a possible splash pad at Cozer Park. Right now, there's a little tot lot that doesn't really get used. It's not, you know, super great, but the, the people from Upper Allen said it's the perfect size for splash pad. Upper Allen has put multiple splash pads in some of their parks. They said it's pretty, pretty easy. You just, and the plumbing is already there because we have a bathroom, had a bathroom at that park. So it would just be tying into that plumbing and so that, super fun things, I think, are planned for, for Cozer Park.
Yes, and there was discussion about a dog park, but we have some further, I think, some further research to do and possibly potentially collaboration with Upper Allen on, on use of their dog parks for Borough residents, which is, we'll see. We have to enter into discussion on that with Upper Allen, but it's, the idea was floated. Any questions? Here are none. All right, moving on to Personnel. Moving on to Citizens Comment. Any other citizens comment this evening?
I'm back again, Mark Stern for Eaton Worth Fogan Street. My concern this time is I was lied to a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago. I went back through the minutes for the, since January of this year up until beginning of April and my comments and my questions have not been answered. One was semi answered. The other six were never answered. And I looked all over those comments. If you find those answers to my comments, I want to see them. I want to see them in writing. This has been three months now since I answered these questions and not one answer has been answered on them. So this is telling me, you don't have the answers. The answers are not being found. They were simple questions. And nobody, nobody wants to answer them. I'm expecting an answer on these questions within the next week, week and a half. I have given you three months to answer these questions. And don't tell me, Kyle, that they've been answered, they have not. I went back to the minutes and look, they have not been answered. Not, only one was semi answered. The other six have not been answered. Thank you.
This is Patty Hirsch, 112 Charles Street. And I did forget one more thing. So when UGI came in and we converted our oil to gas, they did a lot of good work. Okay, and I was one that converted. But on the corner of Gale and Charles, they put in that handicap access with the little rumble, the yellow. It made the water issue that we have much worse. Now that the curb's not there, the water goes up onto the sidewalk and it covers the yellow. So, so, so much for the person who has to go through there as a handicap. That is, it's an issue and I would like to work with someone. I mean, team committee, let's team up and let's just get this done. I want to, I want to provide some kind of value. I'm not here to complain, but let's just get it fixed. I've been there for 30 years and I'm just really surprised at what we have there for right now. So, thank you.
We have some opportunities for you to volunteer. Got you. Well, good. We'll be reaching out. They don't put you to work.
Thank you. Any other citizens comment?
One more thing about that, sorry. I'm not like you said, Upper Allen area. There are some people like me, like who walk, like I'm on 33 West Main. So I just, it like Upper Allen seems pretty far for like just to walk to the dog park because I take an Uber a lot to take her to the Lower Allen one because that's like the closest one there. And I did have like something printed out. I was going to print out to him, everybody had to do a lot of research on the government and like how it brings people closer together and did a lot of research on, for the community. So, and this is pretty awesome. And that's all I have to say, but just about like people who are walking dogs because there's a lot, and I do recommend one thing too, because people are just inconsiderate in this town with their animals and like just let their dogs go to the bathroom everywhere. And like if there's a way to get like a little dog bag or something, like give them the opportunity to clean up. Because I've been cleaning up at the church a lot because she doesn't do anything. Like she's like a little baby. Like I don't want to walk over and step in it myself and it's gross and people just don't have consideration. There's a lot of people like that. And that's why a dog park would also be good around here to bring all the dogs to like Lower Allen. And now we have pizza parties. We put it on Facebook, made a group out of it. So people would come and be an awesome thing and way over three minutes. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. We look forward to your, your communication, whatever, our report that you had. Make sure it just gets to the Borough Manager and he'll distribute it to us. And I believe we are working on a dog bag initiative.
Yeah, Luke's working.
Any other citizens? We do. They're on Memorial Park.
What is the difference between your thing and your thing? So if I want to volunteer, I don't like your doing, what you do, but you basically have to.
Afterwards, we'll come, we'll, we'll fight for you.
Moving on to other business, Mr. Junior Councilperson?
Oh, we do have an update. We just got an update late today from the county regarding the compost facility vehicle loan program. So I'll be providing you guys an update via email and then we'll be meeting with Silver Spring Leadership this week to figure next steps that will be presented to you at the next meeting.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
I just want to take a moment to commemorate the passing of long-term Fire Police Officer Craig Gower. He served this community for just 40 plus years in that capacity. Lifelong resident, also served our community as a school police officer for a period of time and he passed recently, so it's a memory.
Thank you.
I just want to comment that when I visited my daughter in North Carolina, she took me to this massive municipal park in a borough that's maybe twice our size. They had two dog parks in there and one was small dogs and one was large dogs. And it was so cool to have all the people out there. They were kind of.
They were kind of, it was really a community event, all the people that were there. I don't know the logistics or the whatevers that need to happen, but that would be cool to have one in our borough.
I have no additional comment.
Uh, nothing. Chief?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to adjourn to a matter, the executive session on a matter of real estate very briefly. We're adjourned.
If you come up here, I'll tell you the difference. Oh, good.